We're going to start off our Board of Commissioners meeting this morning, May 19th, 2020. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start with the agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there's one minor adjustment to the agenda today, and that's item number nine on the agenda, the EDA meeting. We just want to make sure that folks have received the paper copies of the agenda for the EDA meeting, the minutes, and those sorts of things. So while we have it listed, there's maybe a little different format to that particular item. All right.
I'll move the agenda with the changes.
Landhammer, second.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Pipo and a second from Commissioner Landhammer. Any discussion? Let's see, let's call the roll, Jesse.
Commissioner Pipo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuber?
Aye. All right. And our next thing on our agenda is our County Ditch 34 acceptance hearing. Should we start the hearing off right away, Bob?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Do we need to recess, or is that just?
No, not at this point, sir.
Okay. Good morning. Our hearing today is for the acceptance of the contracted work completed by Corman Contracting Incorporated from Tracy, Minnesota, for the improvement of CD 34. Since we may have the public calling in on a conference call line, I would ask that staff and others introduce themselves prior to speaking. I would ask that all commissioners introduce themselves for the record. We will now have the drainage staff go over the judicial documents. Craig.
Ryan.
I'm sorry.
Oh, Ryan. Ryan!
Craig was...
I think Craig is calling in.
You got it, Ryan. Okay, good. The purpose, okay, first of all, we have jurisdictional documents, we have given notice, which is mailed to landowners on May 5th, 2020. Given notice is published in the Blue Earth County website on May 7th, 2020. The purpose of the hearing is to determine whether or not Corman Contracting Inc., of Tracy, Minnesota, has completed the contract for the improvement of Blue Earth County Ditch 34 in accordance with the plans and specifications. If so found, the work acting as the drainage authority for the Blue Earth County Ditch 34 shall make an order as found in that draft finding to order that's in the package. And that should be a third jurisdictional document.
All right. Thank you very much. And we will now hear from the engineer. Would you please introduce yourself for those listening on the conference call?
Chuck Brandl, engineer with ISG and the engineer for the Blue Earth County Ditch 34 project. Thank you for having me today. I've got a short presentation on the closeout. CD 34 is just east of Lake Crystal, just northwest of Minnesota Highway 60. That's approximately 2,700 acres. Majority of the system was improved. This improvement was actually bid back way back in 2015. Bulk of the construction was done in 2016 and 2017. The contractor was in charge of doing televising to verify that everything was working in the system. That has been probably the biggest reason for delay on why we haven't accepted this yet. The system's been functioning for well over three years, but we had a small list of punch list items. We had a small branch that wasn't televised that we needed to get televised. ISG has bought our own televising equipment to speed up this process, so we don't have a project that drags out this long again. So we're televising almost right behind the contractor now instead of leaving that up to the contractor. But that's why this has been drug out. The tile improvement replaced approximately 35,000 linear feet of tile. We're asking upon the approval and acceptance of the project that all of the old tile that are abandoned, that we're proposing to be abandoned, are abandoned. So the new tile will become the new CD 34 system, and everything shown on the map in purple will be abandoned. Here are some pictures. The tile ranged in size from 42-inch down to 10 and 8-inch. Contractor used a spoon bucket and then sand around dual wall tile for the installation. We had a couple borings of county roads that were completed. And then at the outlet of the system, we had a storage area with a rake control weir before the system dumped into Minneopa Creek. So there's just a picture of that right after it was constructed, before the grass was established. So the total contract for the project was just over 1.6 million. We did have a couple change orders that came up, the biggest one being, once we started digging near the outlet for the weir for the storage area, there were some poor soils. We had to move the weir. We had to extend it, make it a little bit longer so it was stable. That was probably the biggest change. We have a total contract of $1,680,358.97. We're asking for a final payment, which was the retainage of $84,017.95, and that's a little different than what you have in the packet. We've had a little bit of back and forth with the contractor on some final completed items. So revised from the packet, we're asking for a final payment of $84,017.95. I have a breakdown of all of the final costs. We put together damages for the system, so those have been submitted to county staff. There is a total of 117, just over 117 and a half acres of damages that occurred during construction. We do have one warranty item that will need to be taken care of, that we found that we may have a missed tile. We've worked it out with the contractor that will do that as a warranty item. That was just discovered last week. So, but we will get that addressed.
Maybe it's good it took so long.
What's that?
Maybe it's good it took so long.
Yep, because actually, if you accept this today, a three-year warranty on the tile starts today. So the delay by the contractor actually gets the landowners essentially a six-year warranty on the system. So they should have been motivated to finish, but we can only hold 5% by state law until they're done with all of the completed items that we have this hearing. So we're asking for approval of the project, final payment to Corman, and abandonment of the existing system with accepting the new system. We have submitted an as-built that would become the new record and new legal documents for the public system as constructed. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now open this hearing for public comment. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address. And as a courtesy to others wishing to comment, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Is there anyone on the line that wishes to comment?
Yeah, I have my quick comment.
Could you please name?
This is Rich Resch here. My address is 23493 State Highway 22. And I'm on the line Township Board. I'm just kind of watching in today, but watching the video clip and hearing it over the phone, there is a lag of probably 20 seconds on the video clip.
All right.
Video clip. Just FYI, that's all I got so far. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else on the line that wishes to comment on County Ditch 34? Anyone else that wants to comment on the County Ditch 34? With no other comments, I ask for a motion from board. Commissioner Purvis?
Yep, I'd move that.
Brunder will second.
I got a motion from Commissioner Purvis, a second from Commissioner Brunder. Any discussion? Any discussion? Again, it sounds like it was a good thing that it took so long. We got some issues taken care of. Jesse, you want to call a roll, please?
Commissioner Pipo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuber?
Aye. And that passes.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right. Now we are going to drainage.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Ryan.
I've got Ryan Hennecker with Blue Earth County Drainage. I've got two repair reports to discuss. Both are on CD 26, which is located in McPherson Township, northeast of St. Clair area. The first one is approximately 800 to 900 linear feet of replacing tile on a private landowner's agricultural area. We have an estimate of around $16,000 to do that. The second is, we are doing a larger repair slash cleaning on the open ditch area of CD 26. This will involve, obviously, removal of sediment, shaping of the ditch, tree removal, all those kind of basic maintenance items. Also, we are installing a buffer along all of CD 26 open ditch. We did submit for multiple contractors on this repair, and the awarded bid on that item was $138,000. So I was asking for acceptance of those two repair report items.
Brunder will move the repairs.
Pipo, second.
I got a motion for Commissioner Brunder, a second from Commissioner Pipo. Any discussion? Jesse, you want to call a roll?
Commissioner Pipo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuber?
Aye.
My last item would be setting the hearing date for JD 17. This is an improvement project we are looking to move forward with. We are proposing to set a final hearing date of June 23rd, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. at this point. So I was asking for acceptance of setting that hearing date.
Purvis moves approval.
Brunder will second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Purvis, a second by Commissioner Brunder. Any discussion? Jesse, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Pipo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuber?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Good seeing you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our Solar Ordinance Public Hearing. And at this time, we will open the public hearing for the Solar Energy Standards Ordinance Amendments. Staff from Property and Environmental Resources are available to answer questions regarding the proposed amendments. This hearing provides an opportunity for citizens and representatives from governmental agencies, entities, to submit comments regarding the proposed amendments to the Solar Energy Standards Ordinance. And at this time, I will ask staff to introduce themselves for the record and provide comments to the board and those listening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Mark Mandelfeld with the Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources Department, and this item is a follow-up from our March 4th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Here to present PC Item 0220, which is the Solar Energy Standards Ordinance Amendment. The Blue Earth County is requesting a review and approval of an amendment for the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24 zoning. The purpose of the ordinance amendment is to update solar energy standards. The ordinance amendment clarifies the application process, create setbacks for larger solar energy systems, creates a threshold for review of density of large solar energy systems, and to update standards regarding screening, fencing, and decommissioning. The amendments to Chapter 24 zoning will also include additional definitions into the section. Brief history of the ordinance amendments. As we covered last week, there were two Planning Commission Board of Adjustment joint work sessions held last fall where there was a consensus on the majority of the items presented. Staff prepared the solar ordinance revisions in late December, early January. County Attorney Review was in January. Planning Commission heard the proposed amendments in February, at which time they tabled the amendments for one month. They heard the amendments again in March, at which time they unanimously voted to accept the amendments as amended to include a dwelling setback of 500 feet changed to 750 feet, as well as the density review requirements changing from 1,500 feet to 2,500 feet. And then again, last week, we had the work session for the board to recap what the changes have been. So the following discussion and planning commission, like I said, voted unanimously. And the board action here would be the ordinance amendment.
All right. Any questions for Mark?
Not at this point.
No. Thank you very much. Now, at this time, we will open the public comment portion of the hearing. The public comment portion of the hearing allows for an opportunity for citizens to address the county board in a public setting. If you are on the conference call line and would like to comment, please state your name and address for the record. Are there any other comments? Do we have any comments from the public on the solar ordinance?
I've got a quick question on that.
Could you please give your name and address, please?
Yes, this is Rich Resch at 23493 State Highway 22. And I'm on the line Township Board. I'm just asking again within line. As I read here on the general requirement, it's talking about, "Systems shall be prohibited within any safety zone as designated in the Mankato Regional Air Force zoning ordinance as amended." Is there a graph or something that shows that actual zoning line?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, there is. The city of Mankato's website maintains that, I believe, and that's what we would use as a reference.
Did you catch that?
Is it? Yes. Is it possibly the Zone C boundary? I Googled something, trying to pull that out of the pouch of that reflecting line Township, and I see this big yellow circle, kind of an abstract circle, saying Zone C boundary, but I don't have any that references that in that ordinance that I clicked on.
Sure, Chris. I'm not having it in front of me. I'm not positive how it's labeled. If you'd like, we could contact you after the meeting here and discuss where those boundaries are and make sure you have the applicable map.
Yes, that would be great. And then that way I can have that in case anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns on what that may be for us.
Okay, perfect. We will contact you later today.
Do you have his phone number or how you can contact him?
He said he's on the Township Board, so we have the Township Board members.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I'm on the Township Board and should be on the website for both phone number and email.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? One last time, is there any other comments? If not, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and present the matter to the county board of commissioners.
Brunder will move approval.
Pipo, second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Brunder and a second from Commissioner Pipo. Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Landhammer?
I just want to clarify that the 2,500 feet from another large solar array has our group take another look at it. It doesn't mean that one can't happen. I just want to make sure that people understand that. It just makes us look at it again and make sure that it makes sense. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Brunder.
First off, I'd like to extend a thank you to the staff and the county board and the planning and zoning board. This was a big undertaking, and it was a long process. Nice to see it get done. I do also want to just mention in my comments that I did talk to several landowners in the last couple days that it was just too complicated and cumbersome to try to have them call in and testify. They were comfortable with the policy that we have in place, but if we were to deviate from that, they would have had an issue with it. So just want to make that part of the public record, that I did have people that were willing to come and wanted to come, but it just didn't work out for them. So thought it was worth mentioning. Again, I think it's a good policy. We did struggle with the 500 and the 2,500 feet, but we worked through it at the planning and zoning meeting. And I think this will be good policy. And unfortunately, it will be up for discussion in two months after we pass this one, because that is just what it is. It's a new zoning requirement in the rural area, and just needs to have a lot of eyes looking at it. And as these changes come forward, when we see them in planning and zoning at this board, that's when we get our feedback. We all know that we can have all kinds of meetings talking about making a policy, but until it affects you directly, it's hard to really understand it and be part of making those decisions. So we do the best we can, but we learn a lot when people come and testify. And when these things do affect them right in their backyard, it makes things different. So I appreciate the staff taking all the time, and I will also acknowledge the planning and zoning board and the county board for having those joint meetings. I will also mention that the planning and zoning board does appreciate when we get together with them and have these joint meetings. They enjoy them, and they just like to have that open communication. So with that, I will be supporting this today.
Any other discussion?
I believe that it's been discussed for quite some time. And as like I said, it'll be back, and we can always, if things change, you can always do something a little different. But I think that we should move forward on it. It's been planned and studied for quite some time. That's time.
And for my sake, I really appreciate Commissioner Brunder and Commissioner Purvis. They're our most rural commissioners, and they're the ones that this is going to hit the most. This has been a testament to compromise, because some wanted a lot more and some wanted a lot less. As Commissioner Landhammer stated, even though we have certain things, it can be brought up with reason to the Board of Commissioners, and we may have to change something. This has been hours in the making. We've had hours and hours of discussion on work sessions and planning and zoning meetings with the planning and zoning. And of course, the amount of hours that I have had can only be multiplied by the amount of hours that Commissioner Brunder and Commissioner Purvis had to have, because they're... And Commissioner Pipo, since you do have some role, don't you?
Yeah.
All right. But I thank you folks so much for all the work on this. Any other discussion? Jesse, could you call the motion or vote?
Commissioner Pipo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stuber?
Aye. That passes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I just take one second to recognize Aaron Stubbs, who's departed, that did a lot of work on this, and then Scott Salisbury. Unfortunately, Scott is ill today, so he wasn't here to present. But he wanted to make sure that you guys knew that he appreciated all the work you guys did.
Well, they are well appreciated for what they did.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And now we are going to planning and zoning. And I will have a little script here. The next item on the agenda is a planning and zoning item. Planning and zoning staff are here to present the action items. This is a public hearing, and public comment will be allowed in just a moment. I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce the item before the board. Go ahead, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am George Leary from Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Services Department. The following item is from the May 6, 2020 virtual meeting of the Blue Earth County Planning Commission. PC 05-20 is a request from Limeland Industries LLC and Yuen Brothers for a conditional use permit to expand an existing agricultural lime stockpiling site to allow seasonal use of the property. of the property for crushing and stockpiling of recycled asphalt materials associated with highway construction in an agricultural zone district located in part of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 24, Mapleton Township. Mr. Leary presented the report. The applicant's representative was available on the phone. He had no additional comment. Hours of operation were discussed. The Planning Commission agreed that it is reasonable to operate the site until 7:00 PM on Saturdays. Following the discussion and a roll call vote, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward to the county board a recommendation of approval of the request with the findings prepared by staff and the extension of Saturday hours until 7:00 PM, and the board action is a resolution. Mr. Chairman, I would add one item. Mr. John Erickson, a representative for Eulen Brothers, is likely available by phone if the board has any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Does anyone have a question for the representative from Eulen Brothers?
I don't have any.
No? Okay. Thank you, George. At this time, we will open the public comment portion of the hearing, and if you are on the conference call line and would like to make a comment regarding PC 05-20, please state your name and address for the record. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak, so please be patient. Is there?
Somebody put us on hold.
Ah, can you mute that? Jesse?
Well, it cuts everybody else off.
I can mute it, I can mute it, but if that's the individual that we're asking to speak, I don't have a way of.
I don't, I don't either. Is there anyone wishing to comment? Again, is there anyone wishing to comment? Last time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 05-20? If not, we will close the public comment portion. All right. We'll close the comment portion, and we'll bring this back to the board.
Commissioner Brunder will move approval.
Commissioner Purvis seconds. Got a motion from Commissioner Brunder, a second from Commissioner Purvis. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We did discuss this at the phone conference for planning and zoning. The applicant was on the line. He testified to a couple of things. I'm not sure if he had anything to add today, George. Do you know if he did, or?
He did not. He didn't. All right. He and I talked by phone yesterday, and.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't have anything we need to visit with him about. So, no, it was just good discussion, and it passed, so.
All right. No other discussion? Without any other discussion, I will ask for a motion.
For that one.
You already got the motion.
First.
Oh, you got a motion. I'm sorry.
You're fast.
I am, I am. Jesse, could you call the roll?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. That passes. Thank you very much, George.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
Looks like now we will jump to Property and Environmental Resources with Mr. Mike Stalzberger.
Morning, Michael.
Good morning, Michael. Commissioners, we are, I'm going to wrap up the Property and Environmental Resources portion of your morning, it sounds like, after looking at the agenda. So for folks on the phone or live streaming at home, I'm Mike Stalzberger, Director of Property and Environmental Resources, and I'm bringing forward three items for the board's consideration today. Two of them are related to our One Watershed, One Plan activities in the department and for the county. The first item there, tab six in your packet, is the Lassure River One Watershed, One Plan Participation Approval. And what we're looking for here is for the board to consider participation in the development of a comprehensive Lassure River watershed management plan. So this is the Lassure One Watershed, One Plan, the next activity that we would be taking on in the area. What we have before you is a formal agreement which would commit Blue Earth County to participate in the planning process for the Lassure River One Watershed, One Plan, and it is based on the Bowser templates for these sorts of agreements. One Watershed, One Plan isn't new to any of you folks. We've been involved in the Watton One activities. We'll have that coming up later. And these are activities that are taking place across the state as a more comprehensive regional approach to watershed planning, and so this is just the next exercise that Blue Earth County would be part of if the board would approve that. As we work through this process, I just want to make sure that you know that this is a memorandum of, a memorandum of agreement only for the planning portion of the process. The way that the One Watershed, One Plans operate is once the planning has been completed, the board will have to revisit it to accept the plan, and at that time, then we would be committed to a joint powers agreement to actually implement the plan. But that'll be a next step, multiple months upwards of a year down the road before that would come to fruition. We'll also have the ability to withdraw at any time if we don't feel that the planning process is working in a way that is beneficial to the waters of Blue Earth County or to our residents. If we go forward with this, we will need to designate a representative from the board to serve in a policymaking capacity for this One Watershed, One Plan Cooperative, and then we will also have delegated a staff member to represent the county. You'll see in the agreement that was provided there, Julie Conrad is listed as our, is our individual for that. She has years and years of experience working with water planning issues and represents the county quite nicely in those matters. Just to give you a little bit of background on the Lassure River One Watershed, One Plan and how that covers our region, you'll see that Blue Earth County is approximately 48% of Blue Earth County's land is in this watershed district, and we are just about one-third of the entire watershed being in our county. So we are a pretty predominant land mass for this watershed and in this district, right up there with Wasika County in terms of the amount of property in Blue Earth County that would be in the watershed and the amount of the overall watershed that we have. So that is presented to you, just to let you know that this is one of the more important watersheds that we would be taking part in. The Lassure is a, is a pretty important one for our county's water quality efforts. Just also, a very quick refresher for you on the planning grants and the way that the One Watershed is set up. It is through Bowser, the Board of Water and Soil Resources. They do allocate funding for the planning process, and you can see in that memo there, page two that Julie helped prepare, that that planning grant ranges anywhere from $180 to $300,000. We are not sure what the planning grant will look like for this exercise, and there is some unknown or uncertainty related to COVID-19 and whether or not all of those grants are going to be reduced. So that is something that we'll be paying attention to. It is kind of immaterial for our board's discussion today because the county won't receive those funds. They go to the, the group for the planning purposes, and we also have no financial obligations in our work in this. It's only the staffing and the resources that we would dedicate to the process. In this instance, Wasika County is going to take the lead on the coordination of the grant and be the fiscal agent and take on those roles for us. The Lassure One Watershed Plan, if approved by Bowser and selected for the planning grant later this year, will start officially in early 2021, and then it'll work through its normal months-long process to become a final plan after that point. So this will be our second of four that will be involved in the Watton One, which we'll be talking about in just a couple of moments here, is getting close to moving to that implementation part. So this would be number two of four for us, and we'll continue working through them as the, as the needs rise. I can answer any questions, Mr. Chair, if you have any, or else what we would be looking for is approval of the attached resolution to support the, the Lassure River Watershed Plan.
Do we have a motion?
Brunder will move.
People, second.
Got a, a motion from Commissioner Brunder, a second from Commissioner People. Any discussion? Any discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next item for you then is a continuation of our One Watershed discussions here, as I mentioned, the Watton One River One Watershed, One Plan. Planning process has moved from that original planning step to getting closer to implementation. So the next step in the process for us is to have the board consider a motion to approve having the Jaburba Group modify their joint powers agreement so that they can serve as the fiscal agent and the reporting agent for the Watton One Watershed Planning Partnership, which is the fancy title for the Watton One One Watershed, One Plan. So again, this is our next step in the process. We've gotten through the planning piece. That plan is going to be presented to Bowser for acceptance. If they accept that plan, it'll come back to the board, will approve it if the board chooses to do that, and that allows us to move to implementation. So we were getting ahead of that so that they can have the implementation plan ready and have Jaburba be that fiscal agent for that. That'll require some changes to the joint powers agreement for that. Once those changes occur, it'll all come back to the board for adoption as well. So some paperwork here is what we would call this, to allow us to position ourselves for the Watton One, to keep that one moving forward. If the board is so interested, we would be looking for a motion to approve that request of the Watton One Watershed Planning Partnership so that they can work with Jaburba, the Greater Blue Earth River Watershed Alliance, to modify that current joint powers agreement to serve as a fiscal agent.
Do we have a motion?
I have approval.
People, second.
And a motion from Commissioner Purvis, a second Commissioner People. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
People here, it's, it, dealing with Jaburba, and, yeah, it's been discussed for a while about all of these agreements, and particularly this one, and hopefully we'll go beyond planning and actually being able to do some action with these plans, but it's an attempt with Bowser to, you know, to make sure we safeguard our watersheds and our rivers, and so, so.
Commissioner?
It's a step forward.
I, I just want to, I've been involved in, I've been on the policy committee for that, and it's been a long process and planning, so I'm, I'm anxious to move to the next step. I think it'll be a good move. Any more discussion? Jesse, you want to call a roll?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. All right. And the next step, Mike.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my third item of three today for you is actually switching topics on you quite a bit here, and we're moving over to Next Generation 911. As you're quite aware, the county has been working on those efforts, the sheriff's office, dispatch office, and as well as our GIS functions in our department have been working together to write their grant proposal for our GIS components, or the geospatial data set components of the Next Gen 911 project. So you know Next Gen 911 is going to change the technology that's used in routing and answering our 911 calls. In order to do that most effectively, we need to have good GIS data supporting that, address points for some of our rural locations, trail markings, things like that. And so this grant that has been approved and is being distributed through our South Central Region will actually bring those dollars to Blue Earth County so that we can take those next steps in our geospatial or geodata. The grant components, more specifically, the grant was administered through the state to the South Central Minnesota Regional Communications Board, and that was then reallocated or sub-allocated to Blue Earth County and the regional counties in our area. Blue Earth County's regional portion right now is scheduled to be $53,364. That matches the cost that we wrote in our plan to implement the Next Gen 911 geospatial data set requirements. This grant comes with no financial match from the county. It will require staff, time. Our GIS coordinator, Jonathan Graves, and Scott Salisbury will be involved with sheriff's office and dispatch office staff as well, and so that is dollars that can't be reimbursed by the grant, but this will cover the time of some data collectors that we'll be working with, and also with some time for GEO Comm., who is our contractor for a lot of our 911 stuff, to provide the infrastructure and the backbone for it. So this, this request today is to have you approve the resolution that was attached in the board packet, which would authorize the acceptance of that Next Gen 911 grant as required by the grant applications, so that we can continue to move it forward. I can take any questions after you have your motion, if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
I'll move approval. Langkammer?
Brunder will second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Langkammer, a second from Commissioner Brunder. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I, I was just wondering what the process is to do this. Do they have to go out, you know, and in the field, or is it stuff that can be done in a different way?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, there's actually going to be a combination of that. So the data plan, or the plan for the project has us actually cleaning up our data and validating it, so that will require folks going out there and actually geo-pointing or marking those locations. So certain points on a trail, for example, would be a good example of what Next Gen will allow us to do, because if somebody's calling 911, they can find that point a lot easier and get somebody to that right trailhead rather than trying to find it along the entire course of the trail. So that'll be in field work. And then there's also a series of data standards that have come down from the federal government, worked its way to the state, and now will be implemented at the county level, making sure that the addresses are in a consistent format so that we're not searching for something differently in a different system and whatnot, but that'll all be kind of behind-the-scenes sort of stuff that won't require field work. And so that's where we'll have a combination of GEO Comm. doing some of our work and then other data collection occurring over the summer in the field.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up, are we using data that, for instance, the city of Mankato has and just putting that into our database?
Yes, so the city of Mankato is a partner on this because they obviously have a fair amount of actual data, because they have a fair number of the properties, the addresses, those sorts of points. So we're working with them. The data has to be standardized, and so part of this process will be bringing their data into a standard that can be accepted in the statewide system. So, yeah, we'll be working with their, their data set, essentially.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? All right, Jesse, you want to call a roll?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcomed here.
Morning, Phil.
Good morning, Phil.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thanks for hearing me today. I have one action item, ironically, that is our Public Health Emergency Preparedness money. You'll see in the narrative regarding this contract with MDH that it really is for money for public health to prepare readiness for county emergencies of all types, capacity building, medical countermeasures, surge management, surveillance, and investigation, and information management. A slight increase of $256 since the last contract, but obviously, the amount there is what's hard, is we're doing this work in tuberculosis to start, and now this worldwide pandemic, and we have $46,000 to do that work. So it's tough, and this is what we have all known, and we're kind of trying to sort through, but it, it does hamper us when MDH is now saying, can we help with some of the tracing investigations, but this is, we just don't have extra staff for, for such things. And you'll see some of the bigger counties, like I think Olmsted did say yes, and they're in a different scenario with some of their staffing and with some of their tax base, to be, to be candid. So also, the term, I think this one might have gotten delayed some on MDH's part, but July 1st of 19 through June 30th this year is our fiscal year for these monies, and they, they do roll forward again. So that is my only action item, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Langkammer moves approval of the action item.
People moves second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Langkammer, a second from Commissioner People. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Just a comment. Yesterday, I listened, I do it every day practically, and listened to the governor's briefing, which was MDH, and they were saying that they've got 400 people who are going to do tracing. So far, they plan on having 100 more at the end of the week, and 1,400 by June 1st. I'm just wondering, and I, and I know we've chatted about Blue Earth County doing tracing, but we'd need 10 additional staff.
Right.
To do that, and we're extremely constrained with our dollars. I was on the phone with Olmsted County the other day, and they're going to do tracing, but they're only hiring three.
Okay.
So it.
That helps to know.
It's, you know, and they're twice as big, if not more, than us. So I think it's going to be a challenge. And so I'm wondering, as MDH does this, and I'm just talking off topic yet, of course. If they're hiring people to do that, it almost would make sense to hire people down here to do that. But just a comment. And, you know, $256. We're happy for any dollars.
Right, right. It's better than a zero, but not much. Yes, right. Yes, Commissioner Langkammer, thank you. And Mr. Chair, the realities of those things are very fluid right now, and so much so that, you know, Kelly does weekly updates. We try to get you guys updates every week. And the status of that one is so up in the air that she hasn't even written about it. And so what I believe is real current is that there's another survey being worked on. It's not issued yet. With more flexibility rather than the 10 staff, Kelly redid the numbers and came up with 15 staff that we need under this next round. But I think the truth is, just to let you all know, is we always want to help, and I know this board wants to help and regionally help. And there is a sense that they will be looking at, MDH is looking at another model that would be more of a regional service hub model in the southeast kind of area or however we'd be South Central, however they break it out. That's, to be candid, all talk right now is why we haven't written about that is there's just no definition to how that plane's going to land. But I think there's good sense in trying to. I've always felt that with tuberculosis is you have an outbreak and you need a team of people to kind of swoop in. And it's actually a very good regional or state model where you could swoop in with a team of people, do the investigation, come up with some results, and then move on to the next outbreak, wherever it be. Well, that was tuberculosis. COVID's quite different than that. But still same model of saying, could we regionalize this? Should state hire the staff? Should we be prepared lone staff? The other hopeful thing that I heard about the survey is that there might be more of a piecemeal approach. So the staff that we do dedicate to these efforts could be part of that, and maybe they wouldn't require the full. The first one was, if you're in, you need to give 10 staff. And we're like, we're out. This one is, it's probably like, we could use 15 staff, but how many could you give us? And I hope they'll ask it that way. We just haven't seen the questions yet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One more comment. And I'm certainly not complaining about MDH because I think Commissioner Malcolm and her team have done a fabulous spot. It's just a really challenging place to be. And I think we're really lucky to have her leading that charge.
Totally agree. She's been a stabilizing force and somebody that's known to us. Those things have helped. And yeah, it's so tough that things could be a lot worse, and I think she's an asset for sure.
All right. Any other discussion? Jesse, you want to call it?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuber?
Aye. All right. You've got some informational stuff for us.
I sure do, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The first one is from our mental health center, the first slide with the bar graphs. And I'm going to spend less time on the ones that I think are very self-explanatory, and this set is pretty straightforward. We see, you can see in the narrative bullets, some stability in our clinic prior to, obviously, COVID. This is through 19. And that's what we'd like to see. I think we found a nice resting spot that things are fairly stable. In the first one, which is admissions, the scheduled appointments also stable. And then the no-show rate, which had been stable. I did want to comment on that, that we saw a big spike, as you might expect, right when, you know, the stay-at-home order came in. And you'll see the average is around 25% in community mental health. And that's certainly what I was used to back in the day when I was practicing. And about a 30-year people wouldn't show up. And so it's a major issue when you try to look at the business aspects of that. We've always, you know, outperformed that by a little bit. But there's this dramatic picture that showed itself. It popped up over 30% right when the COVID really hit. And now we're down to 13%. So it's one of our lowest percentages ever. It's probably my plug. I know we're sorting out priorities, but the mental health and chemical health priority, I think people do want help. It's really been difficult to get in. And so the virtual pieces that we've done have worked extremely well by that result. And I'm very pleased with that. I just think going forward, I have some trepidation about if we do try to or have to, forced to, have people wait some. We've seen kind of the opposite of the yellow line where if you get in early, you can save detox costs and save hospital costs. If we reverse that and try to come in like now when people maybe have been sitting at home, maybe not doing well. And we don't know. And the same with child protection, adult protection. You don't really know what's going on. And so we're going to find out what's going on as things start to open back up. And I'm just really concerned about that backup, pent-up need out there and the severity of the need, to be perfectly honest, because it's just a lot harder. We have two commissioners in law enforcement that, you know, you get out of jail, you've been stewing in your stuff, and you come out worse than you went in often. Don't have a job, can't get an apartment. You know, it's just a really hard situation. So in a way, we systemically set some of that up. So I just think this no-show rate is an encouragement. The other thing I need to tell you, and I've certainly passed this along in different ways to all of you talked about about it, but our revenues have remained exceptionally strong. This, I think, weird way, after being here for over 20 years, that we get paid, which is one hit a month, works dandy in a circumstance like this. Because if we make that phone contact and we have waivers, we're getting our hits. And so our revenues are extremely strong by all indications. We do have to clear the waiver billing process, so there's a lot of technical pieces that'll show up later in the year. But if everything works out, I think our revenues won't be as bleak as I expected early on. I mean, you know, you look at the stock market too and think it's going to take a 30% dip. And in some cases, it hasn't, right? In some areas, it has, like oil has been a little rough. But other areas, you know, very stable. So weird, weird kind of patterns coming out here, trend lines. But I just wanted the board to be aware of those because I think they are significant. And to be honest, quite hopeful about the importance of our services and that we might be able to help revenues, help us through a hard time. The next.
Yes.
I was really glad you said, you were talking about the no-show because that's been a conversation among commissioners that with technology, we're finding that the no-show has decreased dramatically for many reasons. I mean, people are challenged, but that, you know, they don't have to go somewhere. And in many ways, they're seeing, they're getting those services more frequently than they did once a month.
Yep, that's right.
So there's sometimes a better handle on this. I think these metrics are really important because as we talk to the state and feds about waivers, I think we have to have some data to support the positive things that are happening. And, you know, I keep saying, just because we got the waiver doesn't mean we're never going to see face-to-face again.
Oh, right.
By any means. But it gives us some opportunities that we haven't had in the past. And it also helps, I think, a lot of the clients, customers that we're working with maybe get additional assistance. I was just on a call this morning about businesses and the increase in mental health issues there. Are they going to be able to be open? When are they going to be able to open? And will they ever be able to open just because they've lost their business? So I hate, I don't want to see a spike, but I think we're going to.
Right. And of course, we know that with any spike, there's pros and cons to some good things that could happen through the need, and knowing the need is better than knowing it. But there also, we could be overwhelmed. I think we have been able to, and to be honest, that's our practice certainly anyway, is that you have cases in your case mix that if you have a caseload, and there's some that are weekly, at least weekly, sometimes daily contacts. They're just the acute need of these people that you know they need constant contact. And then there's some that you can do the statutory, you know, once a month or in DD, Rule 185 says twice a year that you have to contact. Well, we do a lot more than that. But, so, you know, it's not really about gaming the money as much as it is running a solid practice that has this different presentation to it about the need based on the individual. I hope, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, that we will get to a point where, yeah, clients have choice. I mean, that's where we should end up, is that we keep these things at work that we've been proven through hard situation, trial by fire, that they really work. And we had our suspicions, and of course, our mental health clinic has had telehealth for a long time. We invested heavily in that. And Angie and I were involved in some legislation about opening up that for some other disciplines and social services. But now the game, you know, has been thrown open, and I think we'll hopefully have the pendulum swing back to some middle turf.
My disappointment with the legislature was as soon as the emergency declaration goes away on June 12th, all those waivers go away.
Right.
And so I think between now and then, we're going to continue to push legislators to extend those waivers, if not make some of them permanent. AMC's working hard on that, the Blue Ribbon Committee, I'm on that. And Angie has just been a great resource. And we're certainly not done with any of those waivers, but it's a process. But it's been shown that they're making a difference. And so we're trying to get the legislature to do something about that. There was proposed legislation that they would give a 60-day extension after the emergency was over. They didn't pass it.
Right.
And so I'm concerned about, you know, all of a sudden, flip that switch and go back to the way we've always done it, which is the last thing we want to do across. You know, what have we learned from this COVID piece? What worked, what didn't, and what do we want to continue to do? So. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair Commissioners, some other data here. The next set of data is about the behavioral health unit, adult mental health area, civil commitment. Certainly, this board's familiar with some of this work that we do year over year. You know, relative stability in the number of screening requests. And I would say that those numbers for pre-petition screening, you'll see how they kind of titrate down in that pie chart. And the most important pieces of those are the screened-out ones, which is actually the largest section. And then a stay-up commitment where the criteria for commitment is met, but the judge attorneys are willing to put that on hold if certain conditions are followed through on. And then a full commitment that usually is facility-based care. And so you'll see the breakout there. The next bar graph shows that mental illness is the highest incidence, followed by MI and CD combined. And then it's rare, but we do have cases that are primarily just chemical health. It's a little harder to make a case about the chemical use when, if the drug of choice is alcohol, which isn't illegal. So there's issues around all of that. But just a pretty stable picture again of what we've seen in the past. The next set of graphs about case management, you'll see, really, this first graph, it says new referrals or requests that come in. It's, those are really our front-end calls that have some specificity. So clearly, as you look at the rest of the data, not all of those are open to case management. But there's a lot of kind of one-and-done services that we can offer to help a situation. And so you'll see that this year, those calls were up significantly at 363 that we had at the front door. And then you'll see a stable caseload in this area. This is an area where things are actually somewhat manageable. And so I often take my time to tell you about where we're leading. Here, we've seen some good stability as well as in the mental health center. So these two areas of practice are in a good position, I feel. And then the cases closed are also represented there. You see that the intake number is higher and the closes are lower. So that always puts pressure on the middle. And so that happens. The clubhouse, you've seen this dataset before. The first one is just how many members attend by month, so unduplicated involvement of members. The second slide is how many hours those members volunteered to help the clubhouse operate. We look at it as it's their clubhouse, and we support them in what they're doing. And then the number of individuals who provided those hours is the final slide. And so that's for adult mental health. And then the last information that I have for the board today is just about children's mental health. And unlike the other two areas, this is the area that we've talked about several times with pretty significant concerns about our status with caseloads in particular. The first slide is an overview with a lot of narrative, but the end of the first paragraph talks about children must be diagnosed with a severe emotional disturbance. So that's defined for us. And then those four bullets are things that you have to add to that. So you have to have a diagnosis plus one of those. And so I won't read through them all, but it is somewhat interesting. I will say, as my past life, being a clinician, it's not hard when you see language that says, or at risk of. Show me an adolescent who's not at risk of something. I mean, it's easy to get there. And so I really think that the getting them in the front door if a child needs help is usually not too difficult if that is severe health. And so I think it's a good barrier because if we took, you know, and served every adolescent, it's a hard time of life. I think every adolescent needs supports. But this is more formal supports. And so that's the way some of that gets filtered through. The next paragraph says 5.75 FTEs for this area of our practice, now serving 170 active cases, and our average caseload is 29.6. The statute, you know, calls for 15, so we're close to double again. And I want to recognize the board's support for us because you gave us a staff in 2019, at the beginning of 2019, and that has been cleanly absorbed, and we're right back to where we were. That's the status. We have a lot of need in our community for this area of practice. The paragraph before the dataset talks about how case managers meet with the child and the family at least monthly. We talked a little bit about that. In regular times, it must be face-to-face, regardless if the client's in out-of-home placement or not. So when you see those big mileage accruals in this area, this is what it's about, is we still have to go see that child, even if they're in placement up in Grand Rapids, which is one of our key providers. And the number of providers throughout the state has been declining. So it's been tough where we do pay for it. To me, it's a primary of telehealth. We're right back to where we landed. Think of the cost savings of being able to do a telehealth visit rather than driving all day long to see a one-hour appointment to come back all the way home. So video conferencing is allowed now, and we hope, as Commissioner Langkammer indicated, that we could continue in some of that smart practice based on what we've learned through COVID. The data box is pretty self-explanatory. Really, ourselves, we, excuse me, are an outlier when compared to some of our neighboring counties.[1706.14] counties. The next slide does get into more about the areas of practice. The end of the first paragraph talks about mental health, social supports, educational health, and direct physical health, vocational and recreational activities. Case managers really do attend all of those in their planning with these with these individual children. The second box talks about that our job is really also to link them to appropriate community resources. Again, Commissioner Langkammer just spoke to that, is some of our providers are are struggling. We don't know if they're going to make it or continue in the business, so our resources and where we link to could become limited. We're a very rich county compared to our neighbors. Most of them import into our county, as we all know, as a regional hub. So we're very lucky, if you will, to have what we have. But I think we're going to feel a pinch as time goes on. And then in the bolded piece, you can see an update here in April of 2020. We have 157 open cases with 13 that were assigned, and so they don't show up in our state data yet. But that's the 170 that Julie Steenmer was referring to. And then again, another breakdown of data and average caseload, which again, now is 29.6, the statutory target, the service requests that we get, which have been going up year over year, as well as opening of cases. There's a graph showing some of that volume increase in caseload at the bottom. And just our FTEs, even with that added FTE, we're back up to an all-time high, really. So we're struggling. I think as we look to the budget, we know the circumstances and environment we're in, but we just have to put a big light on this area. This is one of the areas. Public health was the other, and I'm very grateful for the money and the willingness for the board to try to, in these circumstances, get more resource in there. Just Elipson is the one that took the coordinator role. We have three coordinators in public health, which to my role helps me greatly because Kelly has three people she can turn to that can take leadership as well as herself, which was a major pressure. And I know you you all heard that and and responded well to that. I appreciate that. That's all I have for today.
That was amazing. I'm interested in the total children's mental health caseload already in 2020. We have more than we had all year last year.
Right.
That's scary.
It's very scary in building. And I think with this pent-up need, the schools, you know, haven't been in session. So I think that's kept, we usually see our peak right as school gets out and right as school goes in. And so this is actually a peak of referrals normally. And I think those referrals are still out there, we just haven't received them all. But as Commissioner says, we we definitely see already a huge number that we're trying to to sort through. And so, yeah, I'm very concerned. I will, I will say just anecdotally that the staff felt some relief about being home because I think we're into the business of triage, which isn't pleasant for me to say, meaning that they do fireman's work. They put out fires, that's what they do. They have 30 instead of 15. The quality isn't going to be there. You'd look at them and say, who needs me today? And that's what they do. But they felt like doing that remotely is more efficient. And so they actually felt like they could take a bit of a deep breath, back to some of this other talk, that some combination of of using technology smart in areas, especially like this, because even if we do add a staff, it's not going to fix the problem. We see that. And so I think we have to do that, plus other things like practice smart with technology. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Good report.
Thank you very much.
It's good to see you all. Thank you. Take care.
Mr. Chair, could we take a short break?
I'm going to call for a short break, but why don't we adjourn this meeting? Because when we come back, we're going to start the EDA meeting. So if I can call for an adjournment.
So move, Langkammer.
People, second.
Excuse me, recess, please.
We're going to, oh, recess? Do we recess and then come back? Okay, recess. I'm sorry.
I move we recess.
Yeah, and I'll second the recess. People.
Langkammer and people.
All, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. And a second from Commissioner People. Is there any discussion?
So anytime they move, we'll do an inspection, and then we do them every two years. And actually, these waivers allow us, if someone was coming up on their second year, we could extend it to a third year, knowing that even though we have those timeframes, if they need a special inspection, we can do that at any time. So they're required to work with their landlords to make repairs, but if they're having trouble with that, they can come back to us and we'll do a special inspection.
Mr. Chair, are you looking at trying to extend some of these waivers that make sense today?
We would if HUD would allow us to extend that. So I know they have it now through July 31st, but as things progress day to day, they could make changes at any point, and then we would extend that as well.
Mr. Chair, our state Association of Counties is looking at waivers and what worked, what didn't work in this process. And I'm just thinking, I was, yet another area that it might make sense to have that included, working with the state or the feds on some of these. So, you know, thinking about what worked, what didn't, what makes sense to continue to do permanently.
Emergency needs, we can still facilitate an emergency inspection to make sure everyone is safe.
Right.
It doesn't delay those type of things, but the routine inspections that we do in units that we are in all the time, this just delayed that because we know they should meet those standards.
Yeah. I I think there's some, you know, some some great business opportunities as we look at some of this stuff that makes sense in the future. And so trying to figure out how to get those changed, to me, makes sense, so.
And a lot of the preferences that we enacted, especially the governmental action preference that you provided, really makes a difference at this time. This is what we need, these type of inspection, or the preferences, because we're able to serve more people. Because the shelters started closing, we could step in and issue vouchers to those shelter guests to try to keep them housed. So you really made a difference with that preference and us able to serve more people. And I think even the community, we always know that we're trying to work together to address homelessness and end homelessness, and this is just giving us more power to do that and resources to find ways to do it. And hopefully, with the resource we establish, a procedure that we can keep going even when the funding actually disappears.
Yeah. I I think it makes sense. So I think, you know, putting together something like that would be really helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Jesse, could you call the vote?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. And I will call the the board meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners back into order, and we will go right to Administrative Services. Bob?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for May 5th.
Langkammer moves the minutes.
People seconds.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Jesse, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. And I will call the the board meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners back into order, and we will go right to Administrative Services. Bob?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for May 5th.
Langkammer moves the minutes.
People seconds.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jesse, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye.
Next would be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Purvis moves the bills.
Brunder will second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bills. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I have no questions.
Go ahead.
No, I don't.
You don't have any?
Okay.
Jesse, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 13 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We do have a number of action items for the board today, the first being
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. And I will call the board meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners back into order, and we will go right to Administrative Services. Bob?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May 5th.
Langkammer moves the minutes.
People seconds.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jesse, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Steuber?
Aye.
Next would be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Purvis moves the bills.
Brunder will second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bills. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I have no questions.
Go ahead.
No, I don't.
You don't have any?
I don't have any questions.
Jesse, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 13 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We do have a number of action items for the board today, the first being the appointment of Ryan Tilges as the Blue Earth County Engineer for a four-year period commencing this month of 2020 through April of 2024. Minnesota Statute 163.07 does require the county board to appoint a county engineer to a four-year term in May of every year, or every four years, and so we're bringing Ryan's name forward. He is, I believe, on the line today as well. He wanted to be here in person, but obviously with our social distancing, he chose to respect that, but should you have any comments for Ryan, he may very well be listening.
I'll move approval over the appointment of Ryan Tilges as the Blue Earth County Engineer.
People second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Langkammer, a second from Commissioner People. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Brunder, Ryan is doing a wonderful job, I think. We've got a lot of good projects going on in Blue Earth County, and I think with his leadership and his team he have up there, we're getting a lot of really nice stuff done in Blue Earth County.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We're lucky to have him in the position we have him. He really is doing a spectacular job.
People will ditto that.
Yes. You know, working in transportation for AMC and NACO, I get a lot of my background from Mr. Tilges, and he also is now leading up the State County Engineers Association, and possibly will go into the National Association. We are really appreciative of all the work that he does. He's helped us out, he's helped the state of Minnesota out, and don't want to give you too big of a head there, Ryan, but we appreciate the work you do. Any other discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the second action item is renewal of our health insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota effective July 1st through June 30th of 2021. We do run our health insurance plans for our employees on basically a state fiscal year, July to June timeframe. This renewal, we did utilize USI, a vendor that we recently contracted with to help us with some of our health insurance costs. Through their assistance, we did actually go out and seek some bids from other health insurance companies. It was still determined that Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota was the most cost-effective option for us going forward, but through the work of USI, the original proposal from Blue Cross was to increase our health insurance rates by 9.2%. Through some negotiation on fixed costs and some additional work on projecting future health claims, we were able to lower that increase to 4.6%. We know that healthcare inflation is running between 7 and 10% a year, so we feel pretty good about that 4.6% increase that's being proposed. And so staff are recommending approval of an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota for our health insurance.
We have approval of Blue Cross Blue Shield for our health insurance.
Purvis seconds. Got a motion from Commissioner Langkammer, a second from Commissioner Purvis. Any discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye. Now we get into the voluntary furlough policy.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we are proposing today to implement a voluntary furlough program for the rest of this year, obviously with the condition of the state budget and the likelihood that we will feel some effect of that, as well as the effect we're feeling on our budget already from different COVID-related impacts. This is just another one of those strategies that we can utilize to control our budget going forward, and so you have a policy draft in your packet that just kind of describes the options available should you decide to approve this policy. Basically says that any staff that's willing to take some unpaid time would be allowed to do so as long as we can continue to meet the needs of the community. We did put limits in place that a minimum of one hour of leave time would need to be requested, or for payroll purposes, up to 120 hours the rest of the year. So basically, three weeks of time would be the maximum. This is similar to a program that we did put in place in 2009 and 2010 during the last recession, so it's very similar in that regard, and so we're bringing it here today for the board's consideration.
Brunder will move approval.
People second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Brunder, a second from Commissioner People. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, we discussed this at a work session a week ago?
Yep.
Two weeks ago, a week ago, so it's the second time we've seen it. I think the policy makes sense.
And I wasn't on this board back in '09, '10, but I would imagine those of you that were understand what was going on. I know I was on the city council at that time, and they were having issues then, and the city of Mankato too, but I really appreciate the fact of the staff putting this together and giving. Bob, how much do you expect, or how much did we save back in '09 and '10?
Yeah, the amount expected is hard to say. It really depends on how our employees respond to this, but in looking back at our records, it looks like we saved about the equivalent of four to five FTEs over a little longer period of time at that point. It was a program or a policy that was put in place for longer than what we're proposing at this point in time. So in terms of what we expect, really it's just another one of the strategies that we can put in place, and we'll see what kind of response we get.
And this is completely voluntary, isn't that correct?
Yeah, that's a key point, I think. It really is what individual employees are comfortable with, along with individual department heads having to kind of determine how much we can allow in terms of staff taking this time. If we get multiple employees in a small group that request the full three weeks, then we might have to limit it within those individual departments, but it really is, it starts with the employee saying, I'd like to help us manage our budgetary challenges, and I'm willing to forego pay for this certain amount of time. The benefits that are associated with those positions would remain as if they were full-time employees.
Any other discussion? Yes?
Mr. Chair, I think that benefit piece remaining is really a critical component of this. I wasn't here either when this was implemented. I had just left for USDA Rural Development, so we worked through that in different ways there, but I think it's well worth trying this and seeing what we get, and I appreciate that it's totally voluntary.
Any other discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Steuber?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, we just have a few informational items as well. We did receive a resignation of an administration and communications specialist, and then we did initiate recruitment of a disease and emergency preparedness specialist. That's the backfill to the program coordinator position in our public health area. Obviously, with the pandemic, we have that scenario where we need to maintain staffing. And then we also initiated recruitment to fill a custody officer to make sure we're meeting the Department of Corrections requirements for staffing levels in our jail.
All right. Very good. Well, our next part is the commissioners' reports on committees. Commissioner People, you want to get started?
I always go first, I guess, you know.
You know, you are number one in my list.
Yeah. I'll remember that, Mr. Chair. Let's see, well, we had our, no, it was May 6th, Department Heads. Let's see, Thursday, Kip and I had RCF, we had a meeting, of course, by phone, and then Friday, there was a GABRBA, and there was another phone-in. Tuesday, the 12th, we did have a work session, and, you know, a number of things covered. And then I did have, we did have, again, Kip and I with Wednesday, the 13th, we did have a MICA, another conference, or call, or whatever, the Internet. Virtual meeting, all this excitement. And that concludes my report. I hope that this whole thing
Clears it.
Comes to an end sometime, the COVID-19, so we can get back to our regularly scheduled programs.
There you go. Commissioner Purvis?
Yes, of course, after the last board meeting, Kip and I were here for the joint meeting with Wasika County. They called in, we had a conference call, and did we do a virtual department head?
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought so. Of course, I was in on that, thought that worked very well. The following Monday, we had a detox meeting via Zoom, which was very interesting. A lot of issues at detox. We're monitoring the COVID-19 thing very closely, keeping personnel seems to be healthy, and we haven't had any problems regarding that. And I've got a front door seat to the reconstruction of County Road 10, so I've been keeping an eye on that. They've got the utility work done, and they're starting tree removal and stuff like that, so that project looks like it's moving along pretty good.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Brunder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, as we'll already mentioned, we had the joint ditch meeting, and that went relatively well. It was just a quick meeting. I made department head, and I would agree, it was good to get an update from all of the staff. A little harder to have conversations, but it's still nice to have the updates. I appreciate that. Then we did our first planning and zoning meeting that night with our first public hearing, and we do that via phone conference because of the technology out in the rural area with some of our committee members is a little more difficult, so it was just a phone conference. The chair did a nice job keeping everything in order, and we already seen the items, so I don't have to explain that to you because it's already done, but the format worked well, and I think it's just a format we're going to have to get used to for the next couple of months because we cannot keep putting off these public hearings and stopping our business, so good to see that getting worked through. Had an MRCI executive meeting. As you all probably know, MRCI is going to look a lot different when we come back. We are coming back, from my understanding, but it will be different, and so the staff is right now working on their plan of when we are open, how we're going to open, what it's going to look like. Is it going to, it's obviously going to be more of community, not as much in-house work, so it's going to be, going to be a big change for MRCI, but we got a good staff there and good leadership. They'll work through it. The work session was mentioned. It was good to hear from all the different items we had to discuss there with the parks, and more discussion on that. Mark mentioned MICA. They just have a lot of things going on up there. There were some people that weren't at the meeting, but good discussion with the legislative and a lot of Health and Human Services stuff from Nancy. She had a big report for us. Then last night, we had our MVAC meeting, virtual, which is a 27-member board, and we had about 23 or 24. We muddled through it. We did do all right with the roll call votes. As the chairman of the board and with the staff, we decided to give a full report of all the items that we are going to talk about to the full board, but we didn't vote on each individual item because with the roll call vote, it just got complicated, and the EMP board does have the authority to make all the decisions on behalf of the full board. So when I opened up the meeting, I asked everybody if they were okay with that at this point, and everybody seemed to be fine with that, and then anybody who wanted to stay on and sit through the EMP meeting was certainly welcome. So that worked out pretty well, but again, we have a lot of items to discuss and a lot of money to approve, so for the next couple of meetings, we are just going to try to do that with that format until we can get things squared away. And just to let you know, they opened up the MVAC thrift store yesterday
Oh.
With the, you know, PPE in place. They have their plan, only allowing 50 people in the store, and obviously have their plan all together, but the interesting thing about the conversation was they had a $7,000 day, and that was, from my understanding, the most, that was the biggest sale, a one-day sale. So people are ready to get back out there and purchase some stuff, so they are still taking donations. They started yesterday. They take donations from 10 to 6, but by early afternoon, they were full. They couldn't take any more, any more stuff, so they had to shut down for a little while, but they opened up again at 10 today. If you do plan on going up there, plan on waiting. They're doing social distancing, so you obviously just stay in your car, but they are, they are taking, taking donations at this point and would be happy to have them, but be patient. About six or seven, eight cars back, and it was busy all day yesterday. So that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, and I love the way they take donations at MVAC. You sit in your car and they take it out of your trunk. It's great.
Yep.
On the 5th, I was on a webinar with the University of Minnesota on mail voting. Five states have total mail voting, and that's both Republican and Democrat states, so kind of interesting. They also talked about the way they track the mail, and there's no evidence of fraud. In fact, in the studies they've done, it's .0006%.
.0006.
We have more fraud in person than we do in mail voting. Department Heads was talked about. I've been appointed to the AMC Blue Ribbon Committee, which is looking at waivers across counties. As we all know, Human Services is where we're going to see the biggest impact, and so the first meeting was just about, you know, what are you doing in your county? What are you doing differently? What worked, what didn't work? And it's been fascinating, just, there's about 15 people on the committee that talked about it. Anoka County said they figure 50% of the people who work in their county probably aren't going to be working within one of their buildings in the future, which I thought was a pretty amazing number, and a bunch of other things. Olmsted County, in their jail, they went from 130 people to 30. So, I mean, lots of interesting things, and everybody's doing telecommunion, telehealth. I was really happy to see that the state, yes, in this legislative session, is allowing digital signatures, so I think that's a really positive thing. So it's certainly not going to be something that happens overnight, but we're looking at what waivers can we address ourselves, which ones need state approval and which ones need federal approval? So stay tuned because I think it's going to be pretty interesting. Transportation Alliance, Representative Hornstein was on. Unfortunately, the legislature didn't pass a bonding bill, so, you know, maybe in the special session, that'll happen. After that, I talked to the MINDOT contractor for transit authorities, talked about training for people who serve on boards for transit authorities, and they're looking into that because you hear so many different things. What's allowed, what's not, what by, the federal area isn't allowed, but MINDOT says you can't do it. So I think a training would be really good, just understanding what is allowed, what's not, and getting and getting not conflicting answers. Naco, I was on a call for Naco on COVID and the legislation that passed in the House last week on lost revenue. And so continuing to work on making sure that counties get some assistance in legislation. We'll see what happens. Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, I was interviewed. We're looking at our business practices, our lines of business, and we're going to be doing a retreat. So they hired a consultant to interview each one of the board members to talk about what we saw. On the 11th, Angie Youngerbird is helping with me with the human service waivers. So we had a conversation that day and to talk about what's possible. Angie is extremely, she's on the executive committee for MEXA and is really involved in the waiver piece. So we're really lucky to have her working in Blue Earth County. Million Cups is back. It paused for a while, so if anybody's interested in getting on the Zoom call for that, their meeting. Naco had a board meeting on the 14th. And so the day before, we had training as to how to use this new platform. I've got six platforms on my iPad, and everyone's different. So I thought, oh, this is going to be such a treat. We had 132 on the Naco board call. That includes staff. And I thought it's just going to be a cluster because in the training, there was a lot of confusion. It actually went really well, surprisingly. And the annual conference is going to be done by video. And there'll be three different times during the timeframe of the conference. We still have to elect officers. That's not going to change. So one day, and we'll get all this information in the future. One day, they will have the candidates on a call, virtual call, to talk about why they're running. Another day, they'll do resolutions and the board meeting. And another day, it'll be the general membership committee, the general membership call where you do resolutions and all of that stuff. You have to register for the conference online, but there's no charge. But you can't vote on anything if you're not registered and don't have credentials. So a lot of work to be done on that. We're concerned about the dollars that we're going to lose. And if the hotels won't accommodate the cancellation, it could be a huge hit to the association. We're really lucky that we have healthy reserves. And so that's that. Region 9 had a meeting with Senator Smith, and I got to talk to her about waivers, direct county relief. And she also serves on banking, and they're going to be taking up a lot of housing issues in the Senate. So I think that's really positive. On the 14th, I was also on a call with Congressman Hagedorn, which I really appreciate him reaching out to counties. It was Maurer, Freeborn, Winona were the counties that were on, one from each county. And we talked about waivers, the importance of that, the census, direct dollars to counties, broadband, and what's the economy going to look like in the future, which nobody can really tell you, but concerns that we have. He's interested in seeing what the waivers are and in concept. He said he supports looking at waivers and being more flexible with that. He also, I got to talk to him about the census and the impact on Blue Earth County. With our students gone, that's going to be a huge challenge because they probably are not filling out the census saying they live in Blue Earth County. So that's a concern. The direct dollars to local units of government, he supports that in concept, too. He thinks that makes sense. So just, I think that's a really positive thing. Vance and I had an AMC Board of Directors meeting. A lot of it was on session, which is over now, and a lot of it didn't happen. There will be a decision in June as to what meetings are face-to-face in the future. And, you know, a lot of that is just waiting to see what happens. But they hope to make a decision in June as to our fall policy meetings and that type of thing. Talked about the Blue Ribbon Committee. And yesterday, I was on a Finance and Intergovernmental Affairs meeting talking about the census, which yet again, I brought up the question to the U.S. Census Bureau as to the impact on Blue Earth County. And it's really not a true count if we don't count those students. They are here for at least nine months out of the year, if not longer, and that it won't be a fair and equitable count. One thing that the Census Bureau said, that he, he served that from a few other college towns, and that they're looking at the presidents of the universities and colleges to help them find out who, what students there were and how they can be accounted. Now, if you live in a dorm, you're counted automatically. But if you live in the community, you're not. So he said they're, they're trying to figure that out. That would be a really positive thing, I think, if they can make that happen. And then this morning, I was on a call early about the economy and businesses and what businesses are doing to try to survive. So that's my report.
All right. Well, the last meeting that we had was on the 5th. We had our department head meeting on the 6th. That went very well. I had a call with Bob and the folks from Eagle Creek on the Rapid Ann Dam. That's proceeding along. I believe we talked about that at our work session last Tuesday. On Monday, the 11th, I had a Transportation Alliance board meeting. Again, we're certainly talking about what was going to happen in the legislature. And since the bonding didn't happen, we'll see what happens. We had a work session on Tuesday, the 12th. We had our AMC board meeting again, what Commissioner Langkammer brought up. 31 of the 32 board members were on the call, which was almost better than what we have when we have an actual board meeting, you know. Commissioner Langkammer brought up the fact that Naco would be losing money. They are going to be losing over $1 million just not having the conference coming up this summer. And it's over $2 million more if they don't get the hotels to release. So that's a pretty, pretty large amount of loss for not having. But they are certainly more concerned about the safety of their board members and of Naco members than they are about the financial status. So they're, they're going to have some sort of virtual meetings during that time. Again, I don't want to reiterate exactly what Commissioner Langkammer said, but we'll get information. But everybody should be able to go online and see the meetings. They will not have meetings like a transportation meeting, a rack meeting. All they're going to have is the main meetings to, because it would just take too much time. All right. And that was mine. And we're up to today, and we can call for an adjournment? Mr. Chair?
Moves adjournment?
You want me to? People, a second. Got a motion and a second. Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuber?
Aye.
Always like to do that.